On this episode of Take This Down, I sit down with Commissioner Roy Charles Brooks, and we talk about growing up with a legendary father, Dr. Marion Brooks, and how being a public servant and giving back to his community was instilled in him from a young age and carried on throughout his political career. You're gonna want to take this down. You're gonna want to take this down. Well, Commissioner Brooks, I want to first thank you for agreeing to being on my podcast. You know, I've always been looking forward to having this conversation with you. I know you're a busy man, but thank you for sitting down with me.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to appear on your podcast and see what it's all about.
Well, I hope it lives up to the suspense. We'll kind of just jump right to one thing I've always liked to ask my guests to kind of kick off the show is, who is Roy Charles Brooks at his core?
Roy Charles Brooks at his very core is a public servant. Not a politician, though the political process is involved in getting to serve at the level at which I serve. My goal is to serve the public and thereby ease the suffering of my constituents, to raise them to a better place in life, to make this a better community in which to live, and in general, to promote the general welfare, which is one of my constitutional responsibilities.
That's deep, that's deep. Did you know from an early age you wanted to be or you felt that you were being called to be a public servant?
It was always there as a part of my life. Service in my family is a core value. My father was a physician who served and practiced medicine in this community for over 50 years. And he always believed and passed on to his children that because he made a living from the people, meaning he did not have a job from which he could be fired for doing or saying certain things, that he therefore had an obligation to his people to do and say those things that they could neither do nor say, because they did have jobs from which they could be fired for doing or saying those things. So he was always involved in the civil rights movement. He was always involved politically. I can remember as a young child attending civil rights rallies and marches and events or knocking on doors for one liberal candidate or another. It was always a part of my family's core values. I'm from a sibling group of five, and the five of us made quite a little army once our father turned us loose in a certain direction.
You know, so growing up with a strong father who was only as a father figure, but also had a strong presence in the community for what he did, what he represented, and what he meant to the community. Did that feel, did that give you a lot of pressure? Or did it come with a lot of like honor and pride?
Both was a lot of pressure, because I knew that I would never live up to the standard that he had set. But there was honor and pride in being his son and in getting to understand the regard in which he was held by the community that he served. When I talk about service being a core value to us, one of the things that he told my sibling group and I all the time was that service is the rent that you pay for the air that you breathe. Meaning as long as you are breathing God's good air, you have a responsibility to give back to the community that has nurtured and embraced you and provided you with advantages in life.
That's good. I really like that. Service is the price you pay for living. I like that. Take this down for sure. You know, before we got started, you mentioned there's a story behind Roy Charles Brooks as your name. Yeah, I feel like this is the most appropriate time. Tell me about the story behind your name.
Well, I have run for county commissioner five times and been successful in five elections. The third election, however, was a very interesting one, both locally and nationally, because it pitted me, Roy Brooks, against an opponent named Roy Brooks, which I feel like was designed to create some confusion among the electorate as to who was who in that race. So the Chair of the Democratic Party in Tarrant County at that time took the position that we're going to try to eliminate the confusion as much as we possibly can. And y'all, both of you Roy Brookses are gonna run with your middle names. Now, that had two advantages for me. The first one was that I figured that my constituents could figure out that my middle name was not Laverne. The second advantage was that it honored both of my grandfathers, Roy Edmund Brooks and Charles Wesley Norris. So Roy Charles.
There you go, there you go. That's a good story, but it comes in handy later in life. Probably never knew that when you were a little kid growing up.
Life presents you with interesting challenges. You win the challenge by doing something successful about the challenge.
Right, right. Well, you know, speaking of life presenting challenges, you know, as I was learning more about you, you know, I know you went up to Columbia University for your undergraduate studies. Was that a challenge going from Fort Worth to the Big Apple?
It was a challenge in many ways. It was a challenge culturally, because there's a big difference from having grown up in Fort Worth to going to college in New York City. But it was challenging in other ways as well. I graduated from I M. Terrell High School in 1967. And in 1967, the Fort Worth Independent School District was still segregated. So I graduated from a Jim Crow High School. That was never a problem for me, because we had excellent teachers who could not use their masters and doctoral degrees to do anything but teach little black children. So we received excellent educations. It was probably more of a social challenge than an educational challenge, because I did not have any Anglo friends until I went to college. Never came in contact long enough with any white kids to become friends with them. There were challenges involved in that.
Got you. And so, you know, when you went off to school, you know, having the strong foundation, not from, not only from a household perspective with the family, but also a strong education background at I M. Terrell, did you know what you wanted to do? Did you know what your major was? Or was it something that you still had to figure out a lot?
Well, yeah, I thought I did. I thought I wanted to go into medicine to succeed my father. But as I got into my studies, I found that all of that math and science was not my forte. So I ended up changing my major from pre-med to economics and political science. And I suppose that presages what I decided to do with the rest of my life.
You know, so did you immediately come back to Texas after you finished with Columbia?
I did, I did. Came back to Texas and immediately ran for the state legislature. In fact, when I got off the plane at Love Field and my father drove me home, there were people in the family room at my house waiting to talk to me. And I got questions like, well, what are you gonna do now? And I said, well, I don't have any immediate plans. What do you have in mind, this group of assembled people? And they gave me a challenge. And that was that they wanted me to run for the state legislature. The kicker to that was they wanted me to run as a Republican. The strategy was to file a lawsuit to create single-member districts for the legislature in Texas. And the key part of the argument was that an African-American could not be elected to the legislature from either major political party. The problem with that argument was that nobody had ever tried from the Republican Party. So I said, okay, I'm game. I'll do it. So four of us that year, 1972, ran for the state legislature as Republicans. I got 80,000 votes and lost.
That's actually a lot of votes.
It's an awful lot of votes. But it proved the theorem that nobody, and proved it in a dramatic way, that an African-American could not be elected to the legislature from either party running at large in Tarrant County. So lawsuit was filed, lawsuit was won, and suddenly we had single-member districts, single-member legislative districts in Tarrant County.
You know, I never knew that until right now. Never knew that story.
It's been an interesting life.
So going through that process of, you know, running for legislature with the premise of, you know, what knowing the backstory is trying to file the lawsuit and succeeding in that lawsuit, you know, did you stay committed to, okay, this is what I know I want to do? Go into politics? Are we still kind of unsure if this was the full direction you wanted to go?
That was not the pivotal decision moment. I was in business with a local black business person. And we were building low-income multifamily housing across HUD's District 6, which was Texas, Oklahoma, Arkansas, New Mexico. We built several multifamily housing communities across those states. And business was good. But business was good based upon politics. So I never got very far away from politics. And I learned that there was a critical nexus between business and politics. And ultimately, I ran for other offices and finally won one.
But you know, before getting into, you know, what ultimately becoming county commissioner, you know, I know you learned and worked under Commissioner, the late Commissioner Deion Baxby. What was that experience like?
It was a great learning experience for me and for her. She was the first African-American and the first woman of any color ever elected to the Tarrant County Commissioners Court. So we both had to learn county government. And we learned it together. And I served as her Chief of Staff for 14 years, learning the craft of how to make county government move in ways that benefited our community. And in a lot of ways, I spent that 14 years waiting my turn to run for the seat.
You know, within that 14-year timeframe, was there ever a point like, what did I get myself into? Let me go back to this business world, the private sector?
No, no. What drove me to county government in the first place was a severe downturn in the real estate market in the late 80s. It flushed a lot of us out of the private sector development business. And I took a good government job and never looked back.
No, you know, that makes sense. And it's not like, you know, being a former county government employee with a pension, I know the government, county government does really well. So, you know, you wait your term 14 years. It's now it's your turn behind the steering wheel to lead Precinct 1 as county commissioner. Did you feel that you were ready and knew everything about the job?
Absolutely. I felt like I was ready. I was humble enough not to feel like I knew everything about the job. But during the 14 years of my service to Commissioner Baxby and the, and the people of Tarrant County Precinct 1, I involved myself in the National Association of Counties. And from that experience, I met county-elected and appointed officials from very large and very small counties across America. I learned about how to make national policies that impacted the lives of people living in local counties in America. I gained contacts in federal agencies and in both houses of Congress. And I felt like I had a leg up in terms of experience on anyone else who might be running for the job at the same time.
And so when you took, took over as Commissioner, did you know kind of what you wanted to accomplish? Like what's your initiatives or goals were? Or did you kind of, you know, observe? Obviously, being in that, you know, behind the scenes for 14 years, having, still having a visible role. But you know, now that you're behind the wheels, you get to kind of make the final call.
Well, I had spent 14 years finding out what the issues were. So I had a pretty good understanding of the things that I wanted to try to get done. I had a pretty good understanding of the issues that most impacted the community that had elected me. So I knew that I wanted to get involved in health care. Decided I didn't want to be a doctor, but I didn't get that far away from health care ultimately, because I ended up spending a great deal of time on national, state, and local health care issues, health disparities, infant and maternal mortality, public health issues, and probably most importantly, mental health issues. My experience taught me that there was not an adequate mental health infrastructure in Tarrant County. It also taught me that Tarrant County was not unique in that regard, that in most counties in America, the county jail was the largest provider of mental health services in those counties. I became convinced that we could do better in America, that we could do better right here in Tarrant County. And mental health has been one of my driving passions ever since.
You know, I know when my time with the DA's office, I got to work closely with your office and the rest of the Commissioners Court on mental health, in particular with the jail. And, you know, it was something that opened my eyes as well. But, you know, that's what I kind of, not would say my personal time, learning your passion behind it. And, you know, I think you're, not that I think, I know your leadership helped get a lot of the initiatives that we worked on across the finish line because of your passion and commitment and refusal to hear no's.
Well, when you're passionate about something and you have an inkling that you are right, accepting no as an answer is not an option. You have to keep working and keep digging and keep building until you get to a point of community consensus. And that community consensus leads you to a yes and leads you to making progress towards bettering the situation. We have not solved the mental health issues in Tarrant County yet. But we've made a lot of progress and we're moving toward that goal.
A hundred percent, a hundred percent. You know, 20 years as county commissioner, you probably have a lot of memories, some good, some bad. But you know, is there anything that kind of, that you always remember or stick out as your time as county commissioner?
The thing that helped me to be successful in advancing the priorities that Precinct 1 was interested in was the fact that we had a Commissioners Court that was willing to park their political ideologies at the door and work together as a collaborative body to make Tarrant County a better place to live. I'm not sure that that ethos still exists on the Tarrant County Commissioners Court.
You know, I've always heard you say, you know, being a Commissioner, you need to know how to count to three to get things passed. How do you feel like you've been successful in being able to count to three on matters and issues that impact your constituents? When sometimes for a large part of your career in the court, you, you were the only person, you know, on the Democratic side?
Well, I was able to be successful in large part. First of all, I was never a part of the majority party. I have always been a member of the minority party on the court, the Democratic Party. First, I was one of one, then I was part of two. Two is not three. And one is not three. County government, when it works, works based upon relationships, relationships with colleagues, relationships with department heads and other elected officials in the county. And I happened to have the great fortune to be a part of a group of Commissioners who were willing to consider what was good for the people of Tarrant County. We always said that there is no Democratic or Republican way to build a road. If you're gonna build a road, you build a road.
Right, right.
There's no ideology involved in that. And we were able to take that philosophy and apply it to other issues like health care and criminal justice and social services to create a tide that lifted all boats in the county. I guess I'm, that's, that's my answer to that question.
You know, was there anything that, you know, as you look back on, you can say, you know, I wish this would have went differently or I wish I would have done that? Or do you, you know, are you comfortable leaving and saying that, you know, I have no regrets?
There always would have, could have, should have. But on balance, we accomplished many things that were priorities for our community. And I have no regrets. I did the best that I possibly could with the hands that I was dealt. And I became a pretty skillful player in the game. We had a good run. But I firmly believe that one should not stay in elective office forever. There comes a time, even though we don't have term limits in the state of Texas, there comes a time when you need to limit your own term and not stay there so long that, one, you make the people sick of you and they decide to take the office away from you. Or two, you sit there so long that you block the next generation and they never have their chance to show what they can do. I did not want to be that guy. So I determined what was a good stopping point for me, and it is well with my soul.
That's good, that's good. You know, you've gone to see a lot from, you know, where Tarrant County and Precinct 1 started from, you know, when you came onto the county, what, 30 years ago, to where it is now. Are you encouraged by the direction of the county and where the community is going?
I am encouraged by the direction that things are going. The pace of progress may change. The pace of progress may change, but progress is progress. When I came to county government in nineteen ninety-one, the population of Tarrant County was one point one million people. Today, the population of Tarrant County is two point two, approaching two point three million people. That is an insane level of growth over a relatively short period of time. So one of the biggest challenges facing Tarrant County is how to manage that growth. Not only in capital infrastructure, roads and bridges and buildings in which we do county work, but also in human infrastructure. Those programs that people have come to depend upon to make it through life. Both capital and human infrastructure have to be addressed at the same time and at the same rate because they are equal components of quality of life. And increasing quality of life is what we've all been elected to do.
You know, as you transition off the court into, I'm, I know we call it retirement, but I'm gonna call it the next phase of life. You know, how do you want the people in the community to remember Commissioner Roy Charles Brooks?
I hope that people will remember me as someone who listened, who empathized, who shared their pain, their heartaches, their struggles, who worked every day to provide opportunities, not only for parents, but especially for the children in our communities. I had the opportunity based upon my participation in the National Association of Counties to be elected to the Executive Committee. I was elected Second Vice President in twenty fifteen. And the Second Vice President serves for a year as Second Vice President, then becomes First Vice President for a year, then becomes President for a year. So I became President of the National Association of Counties. That body which advocates for all three thousand and sixty-nine counties in America. The President of NACO gets to choose an initiative upon which to focus the resources of NACO and the resources of the nation's counties during that presidential period. My initiative was serving the underserved. Counties addressing generational poverty in America. And the way we decided to get at generational poverty was to start with the babies, to start with early childhood development in that zero-to-three-year-old space. That space is where the majority of brain development in children takes place. And we ignore that zero-to-three-year-old space at our own peril. The more resources you pour into children during that critical time, the more knowledge and nurturing and concern that you pour into children, zero to three, the better their chances of growing up to live successful lives. Our school districts are just beginning to focus on three-year-olds. That is tremendous progress, but we still have work to do. And I don't know that public or even private education will ever get lower than three years old. But we've got to train parents to read to their children, to have serious discussions with their children, even though those children may not understand what you're saying at the time. You'd be surprised how much of that soaks into their psyches and becomes a part of their value systems as they grow. There is no substitute for a child having significant adults in their lives who are willing to do that for them and get them to that three- and four-year-old space where the educational system can take hold. And we've got to deliver that, that educational system, children who are ready to learn. And we do that by reading to them, talking to them, playing music for them. It makes all the difference in the world.
You know, a hundred percent, a hundred percent. So December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, eleven fifty-nine PM will be the last minute as county commissioner.
I will be free at last, free at last. Thank God Almighty, I'll be free at last.
What are you looking forward to for the next phase of your life?
The thing to which I'm most looking forward is spending time with my twenty-month-old grandchild who lives in the Los Angeles area. So I would imagine that I'll spend quite a bit of time traveling back and forth between here and Los Angeles. Because I believe that there are things that only a grandfather can teach a child. And I'm committed to doing my part as the grandfather of August Charles Brooks to make sure that he knows who he is and where he came from and knows the values of the family into which he was born.
That's good, that's good. You know, hopefully one of these days I get to meet Mr. August Charles Brooks. You know, I know you're gonna be spending a lot of time going back and forth and, but are you still gonna be, you know, involved in the, the fight?
I will absolutely be involved in many activities here at home. Some will be revenue generating, some will not. My promise to myself is that I don't want to punch a time clock any longer. I don't want to be on-call twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five anymore as I have been for the past thirty-four years. I think I deserve a break.
You, you've earned it, you've earned it. Well, you know, Commissioner Brooks, I want to thank you again for taking this time and having a conversation with me. You know, behalf of the citizens of Tarrant County and especially us in Precinct One, thank you for your service, thank you for your commitment, and thank you for giving your blood, sweat, and tears to making sure that the lives of all of us who you've touched and impacted is for the good and for the better. So thank you again.
Thank you, Ty, for the opportunity to come on your podcast and to say to the people of Tarrant County Precinct One, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to serve Precinct One. Thank you for the collaboration we've enjoyed over the past thirty-four years. We could not have made any of the progress that we have made alone. It's a community effort. And thank you for the opportunity to work with the community to get some things done.
Thank you again.